Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the council meeting of February 18th. My name is Catherine McGary, Mayor of the City of Cambridge, and I am Chair of tonight's meeting. But before we begin, I'd like to provide you with a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate the council chambers by the nearest exit staircase, which is located through the center doorways marked "exit," and please obey all instructions given by the clerk. If assistance is required, please see the clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the farmer's market parking lot outside City Hall. I would also like to thank both the media and the public for attending today's meeting. And as a reminder, the City of Cambridge council meetings are broadcast live on Rogers TV, as well as live webcasted and archived on the city's website. Lastly, I'd like to remind everybody that we do have rules of engagement in council meetings. Please be respectful while others are speaking. We do not permit clapping, cheering, laughing, heckling, or any form of demonstration unless I ask. We ask that everyone listen respectfully, as you would want to be listened to yourselves. And as a reminder, council members, please adhere to the procedural bylaw and limit your questions to two at a time. And lastly, please ensure you're speaking directly into the microphones. I'll now move forward with introductions. I'd like to introduce the members of council. We've got Councillor Donna Reid, Councillor Mike Devine is likely going to come a little bit later, Councillor Mike Mann, Councillor Jan Liggett, Councillor Pam Wolfe, Councillor Shannon Adchade, and Councillor, what's your name, ma'am? I'm just teasing you. Nicholas Ermetta. For now, we're going to sing the National Anthem, so if you may, please rise for the National Anthem. I was just teasing him. See if you were waiting. Please be seated. We would like to begin tonight by acknowledging that the land on which we gather today is the land traditionally used by the Hoonoshoni, Ashnabe, and Nootshul people. We also acknowledge the enduring presence and deep traditional knowledge and philosophies of the indigenous people with whom we share this land today. The next section is declarations of pecuniary interest and a reminder to members of council that if you've made declarations of pecuniary interest at a previous meeting, you'll also have to do so for the bylaw related to the same item. So there are any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Well, we have a special presentation tonight, and I'm really pleased to announce that the City of Cambridge has received the Canadian Award for Financial Reporting and the Canadian Award for Financial Reporting Achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association for the fourth year in a row. The Canadian Financial Reporting Achievement Award recognizes excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and is a significant accomplishment by our team. The CANFR and the CAFFRA awards are both remarkable achievements, and we, as council, could not be more proud of the work that our finance department and our city staff do. So I'm going to move forward to the podium. I will be asking for applause afterwards, but I'll ask Katie Fisher, the Deputy Treasurer, and Myrna Reponey, Supervisor of Accounting and Financial Reporting, to join me at the podium to receive the award on behalf of the city and for a photo op. Well, thank you very much. We'll now go on to talking about delegations, and welcome to all of our delegations this evening. As a reminder, you'll have five minutes to address the council, and there are a couple of registered delegates this evening who have indicated that they are speaking on behalf of others, so they'll receive an additional five minutes when they speak. Please ensure that your remarks are related directly to the agenda item that you're speaking to; otherwise, we may ask that you end your remarks. We also do have rules of engagement in council meetings, and ask that you ensure that your remarks are respectful and that you refrain from asking questions of council. At the four- or the nine-minute mark, you'll hear a bell, which indicates that you have one minute remaining. Once you've finished, council may ask questions of you to clarify your remarks. And lastly, thank you for being here this evening, and I will be directing you once council questions are finished, so you'll know when you can return to your seat. I have seven registered delegates for this evening's meeting. For those who are wishing to speak to particular items, we'll deal with that particular item after hearing from all delegations. This evening, under our consent procedure, we have received notification that item number six, Planning and Development Committee Meetings, has been pulled from the consent procedure by Councillor Liggett. However, the following items that are on the consent procedure, if a member of council wishes to comment on any of the consent items, please let us know by using your mic. In the interest of time, we'll look to vote on the consent procedure in a block, but if you wish to comment, you're welcome to. So moving forward, Councillor Ermetta, you have the motion. Please read out the item numbers and the bylaw numbers.
Worship, yes, I do. This motion is moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Adchade. The consent procedure that all items listed under the heading of Consent Procedure for Tuesday, February 18th, 2020 council agenda be adopted as recommended. Item one, council minutes, January 21st, 2020. Item two, special council minutes, January 28th, 2020. Item three, special council minutes, February 3rd, 2020. Item four, special council minutes, February 4th, 2020. Item five, general committee minutes, February 4th, 2020. Item seven, industrial land sale, 0.365 acres, Boxwood Drive. Item eight, recreation complex and library project. Item nine, council information packages dated February 7th, 2020. And item 10, the introduction and consideration of bylaws 20-008 to 20-017, and they're listed right here in your package.
Thank you very much. And as a reminder, if you're just commenting on the consent procedure, there's no need to pull it. You'll be given the opportunity to comment prior to council taking the vote. An item may be pulled if you have questions for staff. And I see Councillor Wolfe would like to comment on this?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item eight, the recreation complex and library capital project, and say how pleased I am that we will have an idea exchange as part of the recreation complex, and to acknowledge that Tom Sander and Helen Kelly from the Library Board are here tonight.
Thank you very much. Any further comments on the consent procedure? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please rise your hand, and that vote carries. Okay, moving forward now to item six, it's been polled, the Planning and Development Committee Meetings from February 11th, 2020. Councillor Liggett, is there a specific item that you'd like to discuss, or would you like the Planning and Development Committee Minutes in its entirety?
No, if we do the Planning and Development Committee Minutes, approve those, but I would like a revote on item number seven after we hear the delegates. Or the, is it item number seven? Sorry. Yes.
Yes, it is. Consumption and Treatment Services Planning Study Options?
Yes.
And do you have a seconder to vote separately on this motion?
Councillor Mann.
Okay, so we'll vote on the item after we have heard all the delegations and had some debate in the minutes. So at the Planning and Development Committee Meeting of February 11th, 2020, committee approved the following recommendation from the staff report, that report 20-024, in bracket "CD," reconsumption and treatment services planning study options be received, and that council direct city staff to implement consumption treatment services planning study option number five, CTS permit anywhere as a public use, as described in report number 20-024, in bracket "CD," the CTS planning study options. And that council acknowledges that there are federal and provincial programs in place for the consumption treatment services site application process, and further that council acknowledges that they'll have the opportunity withhold a council resolution of support for a CTS site application under the provincial program for a site they do not support. Prior to final approval this evening, we'll welcome our delegates tonight, bringing new information forward for our consideration, and this will allow council the opportunity to determine the next steps on this matter. And with that being said, I'll now call our first delegation forward, and that's Kurt Dittner, representing the St. Andrews Neighborhood Protection Association. Welcome, Kurt. And just as a reminder, just make sure you speak into the microphone. We've had some comments that people at home can't hear at times. Thank you.
I'd like to thank council for hearing from me tonight. The reason I came to council is I'm a little concerned about the decision that council made on not extending the temporary bylaw downtown and the downtown areas and opening up CTS sites to the whole of Cambridge. Now, my name's Kurt Dittner, President of St. Andrews Neighborhood Association. I've been working on a number of other projects. I've been very busy, but I had to come to council tonight to share my concerns. Cambridge is facing a homeless and drug addiction problem. Now, I believe that there is a cause and effect. We're dealing with the effect of homeless and drug abuse. Now, why is it so bad all through North America? I think our society has to change. There's a couple principles we have to work towards. One is that we have to offer pharma care so that people can get normal drugs and don't go bankrupt trying to pay for their drug plan, or no drug plan. Two, we have to open up the universities and colleges to the working poor and the poor, so we have to work towards free tuition. Three, we have to move ahead, and people that don't have a workable income because of the way the society in North America is, we should be helping them pay for half their rent so they can stay in housing. And in conclusion, we have to make a bigger plan towards paying for daycare. And if it means daycare, free daycare for the working poor and the working citizens of Cambridge and Canada, I think we have to work that way. Now, so what Cambridge is facing is the fallout of people losing their jobs, losing their salvation, losing their marriage and going bankrupt, and end up on the streets of Cambridge. So from that, they get into a hopeless situation where they turn to drug addiction. Now, I belong to a number of organizations the last couple of years, and there's been splits in these organizations, like there's splits in this council. We have to work together, not apart. Now, one group I worked with took a stand that they wanted to have CTS anywhere in Cambridge, and the other group went in the direction of no CTS in Cambridge. I am here to represent the in-between, the working. I want to work with the community and solve this problem by, one, passing a motion to stop any location in downtowns. I know that you won't go to open it up to any location in the city, and I can agree to that. I have talked to a number of councillors over the years. I've run for council in the last minutes of election on this issue. I've talked to councillors saying that they support CTS, and they'd like to near the hospital or in the hospital. What I wish was happening tonight is that we would be here voting on three locations in the City of Cambridge and none in the downtown, instead of doing nothing. We did, we spent $40,000 getting a consultant report that said, "Don't do anything." I think we have to do something. We have to start with no locations in any of the downtown core. Two, bring it up right away. What is your three best sites that you want so that we can decide? We should be deciding the sites, not fighting if it's downtown or not. And move ahead and build a community that wants to work together. Now, the reason that they didn't want to do the downtown site is they said it can be appealed to the tribunal. I've been to the tribunal a number of times. Anything council does can be appealed to the tribunal. We might be going backwards here. The region may be coming in and saying, "We want a downtown location," and the City of Cambridge may be appealing it to the tribunal, saying, "We don't want that site." We have to protect Cambridge. We have to protect the downtown, and that's the reason that I came out tonight, to show that there are concerned citizens that don't want the site downtown, but they want to negotiate a future site at a different location. Because, yes, we do have a homeless situation, and these people need help, they need a CTS site. I'm not 100%, but I'm willing to give it a try. City of Cambridge, I talked to the mayor and the City of Kitchener, and I said to him, "Well, when you take a site near the City Hall, then I will work at a site, but I don't want it near City Hall." And they're getting a site near City Hall. So the mayor did step up, and he said he would go for it, and they have it. So I'm asking city council to change their direction tonight and vote to stop any CTS sites in any of the downtown locations, galt, pestin, or hesprer. And if we can't come to a decision tonight, I think we should postpone this decision until after the by-election, so the vacant seat here that was spending $100,000 to have someone elected gets the vote at this decision. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hang on, Mr. Dittner. Councillor Reid.
Thank you, Mayor McGary. Just a question, did you realize that we are not selecting a site for a CTS tonight?
Yes, I wish you were.
Well, that's not possible. What we are doing is finishing off the land study that was initiated by the interim bylaw that we had to do, and we have to then look at the options, the six options from that land study, and then choose- then choose one of those options. And that's what's before us tonight.
No, I do realize.
Is one of those options.
Yes, I do realize. I'd just like to see the process sped up and get the temporary bylaw made a permanent bylaw downtown. That's all I'm asking.
I hear your frustration. I understand your frustration, and I realize that we would like to get to it as quickly as possible as well. But we do have to follow the rules. And this is from the land study that was initiated because of the interim bylaw. And we have six choices, and that's what we're looking at tonight.
Yes, and I like choice number two, no downtown location. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wolfe.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Do you realize that this council has consistently said and voted to no downtown location? Last night, last meeting, the mayor reiterated that clearly, that that wasn't on the table. Option five gives us more control of where we would put a CTS, whether we put it or if we put it. So that's what we voted for.
No, I realize that. I just would like to go one step farther and ban it from the downtowns. No, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you. I see no further questions. Thanks, Mr. Dittner. Okay, our next delegation is Adam Cooper from Neighborhood Watch. Welcome, Adam. Now, it's my understanding that you've been asked to represent multiple residents. Could those individuals please identify themselves by raising their hands? That's good. Thank you. Please begin.
Okay. You're going to be down for 10 minutes, right?
Yes.
Okay. Counselors, ma'am, thanks. Good evening. Thanks for having me here again. What am I being new here? Basically, what I heard last week was a willingness to go for option five, which you state gives you more control, lots of control over this. I am scared that you are basing this decision on what was in that study, and that something has either been withheld or admitted. I don't know, but there's some information about option five, some very, very important information regarding option five that you simply do not know. Okay? If you look in the study on page, between pages 60 and 62 of the study, you'll see basically conclusions regarding the Meridian's conclusion of why you should be picking option five. There's a major part of this, a scenario that has not been discussed in there, and that is, what happens when somebody does not go through the provincial funding route? Now, on page 62, it was basically touched on. There's about three lines that touch on this. On page 62, it says, it is said by Meridian that this option would rely upon the federal and provincial process for the evaluation of an application. Which basically implies that there is a scenario on option five that you need to know about it, and you weren't told. You simply weren't told. And that is, if someone goes, applies for this, and they do not go the provincial route, okay? They are no longer bound by the provincial guidelines of community acceptance, council approval, no longer bound by that. Okay? Now, you also have the, as you know, your bylaw, 150-85. Section 2111 basically implies that you have, any level of government has the ability to set up location, operate in a building, regardless of any bylaws. Any level of government can come in, set up shop somewhere, potentially open CTS. Okay? So where does option five come into this? Option five comes in is that it basically specifically defines a consumption site as public use. Which means, as they stated in this study, but they just brushed over, that the reason you should choose option five, as it says, relies on someone taking that provincial path. If they don't, after you've now named it a public use, they can, any level of government, including the region of Waterloo, can simply come in and open up a site without your control, without public consent. I believe by doing this, you will be giving away utter control of this site and where it goes, anywhere in Cambridge, while you stated to us last week that you believe this gives you more control. I believe it does not. In fact, when it was addressed to that guy who was here last week regarding the Meridian study, someone asked him about it, and it states in there on page 60, the excuse that, "Well, we're not going to address that," is because it would be very unlikely, I'm quoting it, "It would be very unlikely for a proponent to apply for a CTS site without provincial funding." That is absolutely incorrect. Chair Karen Redmond stated, November 27, 2018, in a CBC article, that they are more than willing to fund a site on their own. In fact, they devoted to support the, to fund the interim site at an estimated cost of $730,000. So what this means is everything that you believe is so wonderful about this plan is in fact only dependent on one scenario, that they go the provincial route. If they don't, which they have admitted publicly they don't have to do, you give away all control of this to any level of regional government, including the region of Waterloo, who would be dying to move into 150 Main, as they've been trying to do for many years. And this, after last week, when you, I believe, I believe many of you simply are not aware of this, because if you were, you wouldn't have been pushing this concept that it is, it's all about control. It's all about control. I sincerely believe you are about to give it all away because of this admission in the study that they knew about, because of the few lines that they state in here that refer to it, but were not elaborated on. They are in there, so they were aware of it. So this has either been withdrawn, deliberately omitted, or maybe they just did a bad job. But I sincerely believe that if you knew about this scenario and had been informed of this scenario, and you knew the ramifications of it, I truly don't believe that any of you would have said what you said last week, which is that this is about control. And due to this, I do not believe that you have had enough information to give this due consideration, to have learned enough about it, and to represent your constituents properly. I think knowing what you know, you need to, like, please, check out whether I'm right. Check out whether I'm wrong. But this is going through a lot of people, and I believe this to be true. And if that is the case, you cannot vote yes on this, because you will not be making an informed decision. You will not have given it due consideration, and it would be, I believe it'd be a vote in bad faith. I believe that based on this new information, and that should have been provided to you by this study, and simply wasn't, that you need to either vote no, or you need to defer. Because I think a vote yes, based on this new information, would be nothing more than betrayal of your constituents. Also, a deferral would also solve another problem, which is that this is the most divisive, explosive issue to come across this horse, you imagine, in decades. And yet we have one ward that doesn't have representation on this serious issue. We're only less than five weeks away from a by-election that would fill that seat and give those people appropriate representation. A deferral will give you guys to give this due consideration and consider what I've told you. Because if I'm right, you're about to drop a bomb in this city, because when you find it, you are not going to have any more control over this. You will not have control. Any level of government can come in and do whatever they want. And personally, I think if, I would be wondering why this has been left out. At very least, it's a poor job by Meridian. At worst, this has been deliberately left out. I don't know. Because it seems like without this, with this going ahead, the way it appears to be, if you vote on it, I can only wonder whether this is an insurance policy for the region, in case everything goes to hell with the provincial plan, with the community acceptance, which I don't believe is there. Maybe some people are realizing that. But if all that goes to hell, this is their insurance policy to do whatever they want in Cambridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Good timing. No clapping. Thank you very much. We don't allow clapping at the end of delegations. Thank you. It gives a more equal access to those who may have differing opinions. I don't see any questions from members of council, but I might just add a few comments as a regional council member, if you may, Mr. Cooper. I spoke with Karen Redmond, the chair of Waterloo Region, this afternoon. She's been away for a couple of weeks. And just so you're aware, it's myself, Helen Jowett, and Carl Kiefer, who are the regional council members at a table of 16, who represent Cambridge at region council. And you'll recall that after the consultation of just over a year ago, that the region of Waterloo did back off from 150 Main Street. What they meant last year was if, for some reason, that Cambridge council had come up with a site that could be funded, and we made application to the province, and the province elected not to fund a site that was chosen by city council, then they would consider, at regional council level, potentially funding a second site. There wasn't assurance at the time whether the two areas in Waterloo Region would receive two sites, because both Cambridge and Kitchener track well above the provincial overdose numbers. So in order to confirm today, again with my regional councillor members, who I've been in contact with quite regularly over the last several months, there is nobody at the regional council table at the moment that has any appetite to overrule Cambridge council. It's why 150 Main Street came off the table. It's why they allowed Cambridge council to make the decision about a potential site and where it would go. And I have assurances, and I have not heard any comment from any other regional council who would even consider walking over Cambridge council. As Karen said today, Chair Redmond, she said, "Why would we override a valued municipal partner? We just wouldn't." 150 Main is within the 500-meter buffer and the downtown core. You've heard this council vote three times to prevent a CTS site within the downtown cores and the 500 meters, and we confirmed that again during planning and council deliberations, and all of those minutes are in front of us. So I just want to provide some reassurance. This is not the regional direction, that if we find a potential site that's not in the downtown core, not in the 500-meter buffer, that has proper consultation and goes forward, then an application would be made through the regional public health department to the province for funding. If after that came forward, and the province did decide to fund it, and the region is just there as a conduit. If the province doesn't decide to fund it, and the need's still there, then regional council will consider that, and that's months away. But here is myself, as a regional councillor, making sure that everybody in this room and watching at home understands fully that this council has continued to try and prevent a CTS located in the downtown cores and 500-meter buffer, and that regional council has no agenda to override the wishes of Cambridge council when it comes to this matter. So I'm hoping that that's crystal clear. Those are your opinions on this. Excuse me, Mr. Cooper. I'm not going to enter into a debate. I'm just making a statement. I have no further questions. Thank you. And I don't see any other questions from members of council. It's for a point of clarification. And I see Counselor Devine has arrived. And the next delegation is Lynn Gates and Murray Marshall. And I understand that you are representing some members in the community. Could those members please put up their hands? Thank you. So you'll have 10 minutes, so you'll hear the bell at 9:00.
Thank you for letting us speak tonight. We too are asking that you not choose option five, and we have our explanations for that. I just want to point out quickly, I'm not sure if all of you are aware, that there is a bit of good news in that Cambridge has seen quite a reduction in overdose deaths in 2019 as compared to Waterloo and Kitchener. We only had 17 this year compared to 29 in 2017, whereas Kitchener, the numbers of deaths have gone up. So that means something is going right here. Now, I think you're going to hear from people tonight that are frustrated, because we all want Galt's core to survive. It's a small core, but we have a lot of social services here. Therefore, we seem to have a hotspot that stays here, more shelter beds in just about any city in the entire province per capita, if you consider Galt as its own town. Now, we've been fighting this for years, and we keep thinking, okay, there's solid protection for our cores. In 2018, you listened and you passed that first bylaw, 5518. I think that gave a lot of people reassurance that we wouldn't keep hearing about 150 Main, and that this downtown core would be protected and off the table. But as you all know, and businesses were hopeful. People in this room signed leases on the belief that, okay, nothing more is coming to our core in terms of these services. But then regional health ignored a bylaw. And what did they do? They chose 150 Main. So suddenly, we were all back fighting again and expressing our concerns again. And our groups sent around a petition. We got 90 businesses, 178 residents in a, you know, in a very short period of time in downtown Galt. There were protests outside city hall, and there were the consultations at 150, for the 150 Main Street site, and it was a resounding no to a site in our core. And last year, council extended the bylaw, which gave a lot of comfort to a lot of local businesses and residents. I notice a lot of you talk about a site at the hospital, and just as a quick aside, I think you should ask the hospital and ask public health if they're willing to do that, because our recent information is, they are not. They don't consider the hospital a suitable site, even if the hospital is willing to host it. So here we are at another crossroads. Option five, which is permit anywhere as a public use. Now, when you do this, you haven't struck your site selection committee yet, I've understood. Have you? Because if not, there's going to be somebody on public health on that committee, and they own the building at 150 Main, and they will have no restrictions if you do option five. Oh, sorry.
Madam Mayor, councillors, my name is Murray Marshall. We both live at 25 Oak Street, just up the street. So I'd like to just carry on with the presentation. I guess we're going to be saying to you some things that you've already heard from Mr. Cooper and maybe others, that option five, the issue with option five is there's no certainty. With option two, with the interim control bylaw, there was certainty. We knew for certain that the interim control bylaw prevented, prohibited a CTS or OPS or those sorts of sites in the core plus 500 meters. Option two would do the same, would carry that forward, would provide that certainty that business owners and residents of the downtown core need. Option five is what I call the do-nothing option, where everyone is relying in good faith, on assurances that have been given orally. And I took careful note of your comments and your conversation that you had with Madam Redmond, and it's reassuring. But at the same time, when she said she's not willing to cross the council here, for the last two years, she had no choice. For the last two years, there was a bylaw, and the bylaw prevented her from doing that. After March 26, what do we have? You're hanging your hat on something that relies upon the applicant going through the provincial process, because if they don't go through the provincial process, they don't need to come and ask for a resolution of support. If the region, if public health, if the region were to decide they wanted to put a CTS anywhere in the core at 150 Main, they could do so without coming here and asking for that resolution of support. So the concern, and I realize I'm skipping around on the slides here, but what we're seeking in a nutshell is the certainty that comes along with option two. I know there was concern- I know there was concerns expressed in the Meridian report about, well, if we do option two, we're going to be taken to the tribunal, and there's going to be appeals and the costs associated with that. And there was a reference to the City of London case, a recent decision. There's also reference in the Meridian report to a legal opinion that was written by the city solicitor. I have asked for that opinion. I've asked Mr. Calder for a copy of that decision. He hasn't given me yes or no on it yet. But I would like to read that decision. I'd like to ask each of you, have you read that decision? Have you read the decision from the city solicitor that says there's a risk if you go forward with option two? Have you read it? Is it a real risk? Are you jumping at shadows? As Mr. Dittner said, there's all kinds of reasons why you can be taken to the tribunal. It happens all the time. Is this a real concern? If you do option two, you will reassure the downtown, the residents, the business owners, that they can move forward with their businesses without this sort of domicles hanging over their head, which is what we had with option five. So, in conclusion, we are asking the city council to reconsider the decision that they took on February 11, and to support option two rather than option five. And finally, we're asking you to consider, as other speakers have said, deferring a decision entirely until after you have a full quorum, until the Ward Seven election, until you have all of your seats filled. This is a critical decision. It's one that requires, in my view, a full council to decide it. And also, are you sure? Are you really sure? Have you read the legal opinion? Have you gone through this carefully? Are you sure you're getting the control that you think you're getting? I'm not sure that I'm convinced. Are you convinced? Until you're convinced, you should defer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a question from Counselor Liggett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's actually a question for our legal department. Based on the question from the delegate, can council prohibit a CTS in any area of the city or citywide through zoning? Can't hear you.
Three, Madam Chair. I'd suggest that we have that discussion enclosed, if that's a question that you want answered by the legal counsel.
Pardon me? Okay. I don't mind having closed on that. It's a very important decision. So after the delegates have...
Would you like...
After the delegates, if you want to take a break. And we can do that enclosed.
Yes, we can. Do you want to hear the rest of the delegate?
Yes, please.
Or do you want the legal solicitor-client privilege shortly? We could do... We can finish with the delegates?
I'd prefer that. I think that would be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a lot of slides that... Just want to end quickly saying we are reintroducing anxiety and uncertainty.
I'm sorry. You're finishing... Are you finishing the presentation? Thank you. Brian Kennedy, you're the next delegation. Welcome, Brian. And I understand you're representing the BIA, and you'll have up to ten minutes. Thank you.
Am I good? Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. Thank you. Yes, I'm back tonight to speak, but pivot on this issue that is... Has been a grave concern for our membership. And so we felt the need to definitely come out and speak again a little bit more to some of the issues, especially this week, that we're hearing from our members. Again, I'm here tonight on behalf of just the downtown Cambridge BIA and the recent decision passed for option five in the report from staff, and as presented by Meridian Consultants. Our BIA and our members have heard from many of you that have shared your remarks against a CTS site in the downtown. And we appreciate that. And we recognize that you guys fully support there not being one in the downtown. Despite that, though, and those intentions, I hear that there is not a concerted effort to best help us understand why option five was the correct decision. You have acknowledged that through option five you would have the opportunity to withhold a council resolution of support for a CTS site application under the provincial program for a site that you do not support. But we have not heard from staff or the consultant on what we perceive to be the real threat of a CTS application coming forward with federal, regional, or private funding omitting the requirement of council approval. Meridian's report stated that option two, the P A L T, cannot compel city to pass a resolution for a CTS should it be appealed. They also shared that support for option two and others would require region approval, which I believe would challenge them to publicly take a stance protecting our core areas, which I do not identify as a bad thing. I think to get their support right away, saying that they agree with your decision to protect our core areas would not be a bad thing and would help our membership feel relieved that that support's there should an appeal come forward. So it's with that said, our ask of you this evening is to essentially take more time to evaluate the risks of both option five and option two, acknowledging the possibility of an application without provincial funding. We urge you to ask for more feedback from the resources made available to you and to not rush a decision that our members and the community do not understand. And as we just heard from other delegates, this is a concern. This is a concern that we don't understand why option five, you know, was a better choice versus option two. And that we feel that there's been something overlooked here that's not being addressed, which is these other ways for which the application can come forward. You know, as echoed in the report and the presentation to the Planning and Development Committee, I feel, and as do many others, that it's not a sufficient amount of information provided to our members. And it doesn't safeguard the downtown core areas from this perceived threat. Our ask is that you defer your decision until the answers that we are looking for are made. And perhaps you guys have been informed about these decisions, but we haven't been informed about these decisions. So we do not know all that maybe you know. And should you not know these answers, then we would like to see you defer this until you do know the answers yourselves and that we can feel confident in the decision that you guys have made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay. Sheri Roy, thank you very much for your written correspondence received earlier today. And I believe you're speaking, so welcome, Sheri.
Good evening. I am here speaking in regards to the public use designation for land use in regards to the CTS in Cambridge that is before you here tonight. I wish to remind council that this is a highly sensitive issue and that I believe all seats on council should have representation. Ward Seven remains without a councillor. And with the by-election so close, a deferral should be proposed. Just this past August, the city's integrity commissioner was quoted as saying, "I encourage council members to be better listeners." There are approximately 10,000 residents in Ward Seven that include families, schools, daycares, seniors, activities, and businesses. How can they have their voice when there is no one to represent them? Each of them should have access to their democratic right to representation here tonight. It is possible that a location may be suggested within Ward Seven or close to it for such a site. There are many concerns from the community with issues in the Franklin and Dundas area of increased crime, panhandling, open drug use theft, and disturbance calls, just to name a few. In the past, council has deferred decisions on critical motions. The multiplex is an example of recognizing that all members of council needed to be able to have a vote because of the strong apprehensions from the public. Council already has a public consultation report as well as a planning study regarding CTS anywhere in Cambridge, where residents have spoken loud and clear with strong community opposition, which is currently being ignored. It was not that long ago that council voted to hold a by-election versus appointment so that Ward Seven could have their democratic right to choose their elective representative. I simply ask that you allow that process to proceed as intended and defer until after the by-election. So my question to each of you is, will you vote for or against the democratic rights of 10,000 Ward Seven residents? Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments of the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next delegation is Jeffrey Shaver. Welcome, Jeffrey.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'd like to talk about the Safe Injection Services and what they can potentially offer to our community. It is an unconventional approach to a problem. And I think we need to recognize that we're not going to be able to arrest our way out of these problems. There is... It's a big issue. And we need to look at a different approach, a manageable approach that we can actually make an impact in this. And... Because the problem is already here. And I think that there can be... Something can be said about delaying, delaying, delaying all the time. Delaying isn't going to solve anything. It's just going to push our problems down the road. They get bigger. By delaying, we're not actually doing anything. We're not saving ourselves. This need is something we do need in this community now. We've already put it off for a few years since it's been made a critical attention, has been brought to the issue. And I think council has already missed some earlier opportunities for funding at provincial guidelines on the previous sites in the past. Had a site selection process had gone through instead of a bylaw that had gone in place to restrict the site. And I'd also like to talk about the need for the site to actually be where the people are, where the calls are happening, where the actual most amount of overdoses are happening. It's critical that it's in the red zone. People that have some of these issues, the substance abuse, they're not traveling sometimes too far in some cases. We need to have it where it's somewhere that's going to make a large impact to our problems, or else it's not going to be money good spent on a solution here. And I think we also need to talk about those better services that need to be offered in conjunction with the Safe Injection Site. And it's important to keep in mind that since these people are coming into the Safe Injection Site, the Safe Consumption Sites, they are the people that are suffering from addiction. And therefore, we can market our addiction services and our recovery services to those people. And it's a good audience where you know you're actually getting a good impact for your marketing dollars spent. And really, you have to think about drugs as a business, because that's what they are. You have to look at what the market is and how you can actually market to those people the services that we can get them towards counseling. And we need to look at having some of the impacts dealt with, including zoning for better solutions for housing that's manageable, including supportive housing and as well for supports for people that are living in their own regular housing to keep them in the loop with the medical system. And there's some key things that sometimes the Safe Consumption Services offer in terms of their safety. Some people, they test the drugs. So in other words, since adulteration of drugs can be common or the actual intensity of the drug, the dosage can actually be varying, people will actually basically test a small amount of their drugs. And if they do that in the Safe Consumption Site, if there is an issue, they're going to be monitored. They're going to be offered other emergency services there or be offered the proper services being brought to help where it's needed. I think we also need to talk about looking at the... It's a different time now. I mean, there's...
Excuse me, Jeffrey, if you just wouldn't mind. Do you have a point of order? Hang on just a second till I turn my mic on, please.
The delegates are supposed to be speaking to the item on the agenda. And Mr. Shaver, I understand his compassion, but he's gone way offside.
Yeah. Will you keep your comments into the agenda? I don't... Thank you.
The impact of the site selection on where it's going to be has to be in a critical... Has to be in the critical area. And in my opinion, is in the Galt Core and potentially with support for perhaps smaller ancillary sites in the Preston and Hespler Core. It's where the people are as we have to put these services. To the impacts of crime, I think you actually have to look at the impacts that it's going to cause. You need to actually look at how you can reduce that by... Such as the suggestions of Dr. Nykamp with our Safe Consumption Sites, is that is pay for the drugs, actually offer them. Because when you do that, you actually impact on the Safe Consumption Site. And the people actually... That are actually selling that. And you actually have a chance to actually make the biggest impact in the market. So the site has to be in a location where it's going to be in an impact. And it has to offer those services that are going to actually make an impact in the market. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay. Our next delegation is Angela Campbell. Angela, welcome. It's coming. Sometimes it's a bit of a delay when we push the buttons. Hang on till the red light's there.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Angie Campbell, and I'm here as a concerned citizen. Last week, you voted to accept option five. And this option states, "Permit as a public use, city to consider a CTS site a public use when operated by any public agency as per the policies in the OP and provisions of the zoning bylaw." By accepting option five, you're going to be relying heavily on the fact that opening one will need to be funded by the province. When at the February 11 meeting, the consultant was asked, "What happens if private funding is used?" He said, "That's highly unlikely." He can't say that. It's not... It could happen. However, on November 27, 2018, in an interview with CBC, the regional chair, Karen Redman, was quoted as saying, "The region could go to the federal government, ask for an exemption, and then fund the sites ourselves." If this were to happen and the region decides to fund the site, If this were to happen, and the region decides to fund the site, they could very well put it at 150 Main, they could very well put it anywhere in any of our cores, or anywhere that you guys don't want it. So there's no way for council to say no to any application, and there'll be no restrictions in place. That leaves our city and our core areas with zero protection and zero control for you guys. I urge council to not approve Option Five at this time, and consider all of this before you make Option Five an official bylaw. You should also be taking into consideration that majority of the people at all the consultations were against a CTS in general, and you guys were elected to represent us as the people and the citizens of your city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of council? I have just one clarifying question, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
You mentioned Karen, Chair Karen Redman. Can you give me the date that you were talking about there?
November 27th, 2018.
Okay, she wasn't Regional Chair-
No, she was being inaugurated though shortly after that.
December 5th?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So that is it for our list of delegations tonight. So we'll move forward, and I'd like to propose that council consider consultation with our city solicitor this evening, and to do this, we're required by our procedural bylaw 18-15, Section 22.1, to take a special majority vote to suspend the rules contained in Section Five, which was notice of meeting. This would then grant us the ability to take a separate vote to move into a brief closed council session meeting. And with that, I'm going to read the motion. Will I have a seconder for this? Counsel Liggett. So the motion to suspend certain rules. So moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Liggett, that in accordance with Section 22.1 of the procedural bylaw, council suspends the requirement to provide notice. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, and I'll call for the votes. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And that carries. And now I'm going to read the next motion there, and it's moved by myself, and will I have a seconder for that? And this is regarding consideration of matters in closed session. So it gives us the permission and the reason why we're going into closed. Counsel Mann. So consideration of matters in closed session, it's moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Mann, that in accordance with Section S239 of the Municipal Act 2001, council may convene in closed session to consider the following subject matters. Number one, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you. So we'll now take a short recess and reconvene following the closed session. So council members will now move down to their closed session. Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. Do I have a motion to go back into public session? Counselor Wolfe?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Emetta. Counsel to rise from closed session. The council rise from closed session and reconvene in open session.
Okay, all those in favor? And that carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll return to the motion on item number seven. Counselor Wolfe, do you have that motion? Okay.
Yes, I do.
Counselor Wolfe, please.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Adche. Item seven, re-consumption and treatment services planning study options from the Planning and Development Committee minutes. That report twenty dash zero two four C D, re-consumption and treatment services planning study options be received. And that council direct city staff to implement consumption and treatment services, CTS, planning study option number five, CTS permit anywhere as a public use as described in report number twenty dash zero two four C D dash CTS planning study options. And that council acknowledges that there are federal and provincial programs in place for the consumption and treatment services site application process. And further, that council acknowledges that they still have the opportunity to withhold a council resolution of support for a CTS site application under the provincial program for a site they do not support. And speaking to the motion?
Go ahead.
I have heard the delegates tonight and listened to staff, our consultant, and community members last week when we passed this motion. I still believe option five is the best option and gives council the most control as to where a CTS is located. I've been asked to stand up for what I believe is right, and that is what I am doing. I think a CTS is necessary. I also believe its location is very important, and that is why I want council to maintain control of this. If we choose any option other than five, it needs to, it needs an amendment to our official plan and a temporary zoning bylaw. This has to go to regional council for approval, and then it can be appealed to LPAT. The region can appeal it, we can appeal it, but so can any other group. And once the appeal goes to LPAT, it's their decision is final. So, again, option five is the only option where we are not proposing an official plan amendment or a zoning bylaw, and is the only option where we maintain control. So, in conclusion, the option according to our experts which best protects us and leaves the decision in our hands is option five, as passed in the motion last week. I urge council to once again vote for this option.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Emetta?
Well, thank you, your worship. I do appreciate all the feedback on this topic, as always. As a member of the downtown Cambridge BIA, and you heard them tonight, I would like to put forward a motion of deferral till after the Ward seven by-election so that that representative can weigh in. And I would also like to have someone meet up with the BIA between now and then, that they can get more information on the process. I was asked to bring it forward, and I'm doing that right now, so I'd like to table that motion for deferral if I can get a second or...
Thank you. Is there a second or for your motion? Counselor Leggett? And we have the deferral on the floor, and we will move to question and comment. Speaking to time and motion? Time and place? Counselor Devine?
No, I'm not speaking time and place. I'm just saying that the HSPAR BIA supports the same deferral.
Are there any other questions or comments for, for a deferral? Counselor Wolfe?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I would suggest we do not defer it till after the election. I think we, if we get the process started, then we can have the new member look at any site selection. And, and we need to get this process started.
Thank you. Counselor Reed?
Thank you. Through you, your mayor. I'm not in support of a deferral because we need to make a decision, because the interim bylaw requires that we make a decision before March the 26th. And I'm fearful that, that we would not be able to meet that obligation. And that is why the, the study has come before us now, so that we have plenty of time to make a decision and to let people know that we have met the obligation of the interim bylaw planning study, and that we have then chosen an option in compliance with that. So, no, I'm not in support of, of deferring.
Thank you. Counselor Emetta?
Thank you, all your worship. I'm just bringing that forward because this is a very contentious issue, and it's one of those issues that when you make a decision, there's no turning back. And I know that we're not choosing a site. I understand that. But we're going in that direction, and I think that it's just another step in the process, and I think we should have all members of council here.
Time and place.
Well, I'll leave her at that, but that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Time and place, Counselor Adche?
Yeah, I just wanna, I'm not, I don't think we need, we should defer this either, because we only have till March 26th. Like Counsel Reed said, we really need to make a decision. We gotta get moving on this, so I don't, I don't support a deferral.
Thank you. Time and place, Counselor Emetta?
Your worship, are we able to have a special meeting then before the bylaw expires and have that member of council be sworn in on the same night?
No.
Or before?
I have it from the clerk. That's not possible. Thank you. Counselor Leggett to time and place?
Timing to do with the interim control bylaw, at this point, it doesn't make any difference if we're not... Am I correct that it won't make any difference if we're doing an option that would not? If, if it was an option five? Because the interim control bylaw.
Could you speak right into the mic and a little louder and?
Yes, so if we're, if we're talking about time of March 26th, that becomes moot with what we're doing, correct?
I will have staff weigh in on that.
Do you know what I'm getting at?
Our city manager will weigh in. Thank you.
To you, Mayor, to members of council. Counselor Leggett is correct. The interim control bylaw is a moot point. If it expires, you have completed the control bylaw is a moot point. If it expires, you have completed the study. You just have not made a decision on it, which you can do after the interim control bylaw expires because you do control the process based on applications have to come before council for your resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Devine.
Yes, thank you, the chair. With that, the information was just given. I have absolutely no problem with deferral. None.
Counselor Med, I'm going to put you back up to talk about time and place in the motion there.
Thank you, your worship. I was just gonna request a recorded vote, and based on what the clerk had mentioned, I'm comfortable with the timeline, so...
Sorry. Technical difficulties up here. You need to read the time and place motion that was presented there. Thank you.
Well, thank you, your worship. This is moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Liggett. That the consumption and treatment services study options report from the February eleventh, twenty twenty Planning and Development Committee minutes be deferred to the next council meeting after the Ward seven counselor takes their oath of office. That's how it's worded.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or comments, a time and place? Seeing none, we're ready to call the vote on the deferral? All those in favor of the deferral? Please, oh, did you request recorded? Hang on. Members cast your vote. And that carries. I will ask for no applause in the audience. We have to remember, they're those that are here that have alternate opinions. Thank you. I need, I need my screen back here. Okay, got it. All right, so we'll move forward. Thank you. We'll move forward to notice of motions. Counselor Liggett, I understand you have a notice of motion for council's consideration at their March seventeenth council meeting. Please read your notice of motion.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. My notice of motion is whereas there is a failure of our overall drug and addictions policies and strategies to provide for adequate, timely, and sustainable detox and addiction rehabilitation programs in a safe supportive environment, and whereas methods of harm reduction are a stopgap until those struggling with addiction are able to have immediate access to adequate detox and rehabilitation programs, and whereas the community of Cambridge has shown their concern and compassion for the lack of access and availability for their fellow residents who are asking for such assistance, and whereas there's an inadequate quantity of rehabilitation facilities throughout the province providing the required number of beds and programs for those struggling with substance abuse requesting assistance, and whereas publicly funded services for detox and rehabilitation programs would ensure that all persons receive such help equitably and in a sustainable way, and whereas some persons struggling with substance abuse may need such programs more than once, therefore be it resolved that the City of Cambridge asks the Province of Ontario for the much-needed funding to provide for such relief for the City of Cambridge as well as throughout the province.
Thank you. Are there any other notice of motions to be brought forward? Seeing none, we'll move on and just note correspondence that's been given to you and left at your place. Any other business? Does any other member of council have any other business? Seeing none. Are there any non-jurisdictional items? Seeing none. We need the confirmatory bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council meeting this evening. And Counselor Mann, I believe you have the motion.
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Jan Liggett. The confirmatory bylaw being a bylaw of the City of Cambridge to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the City of Cambridge at its meeting held on the eighteenth day of February twenty twenty, passed and enacted this eighteenth day of February twenty twenty.
Thank you. Are there any comments from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that carries. And now we come to the close of the meeting. Counselor Adchade, I believe you have the motion. Please read it in its entirety.
I do, your worship. Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Emetta. That the council meeting is now adjourned at nine oh six P M.
Thank you. And all those in favor, and I'm going to ask to hold applause for the second time. It is not fair to other members in the gallery that hold different opinions. It's why we have a code of conduct. It's why we read it at the very beginning. Thank you. And I will now call for the vote. All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you very much.